Start with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Schmait.
Here. The mayor is attending a national council mayor's meeting tonight, so I'm filling in. First up is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. We have two sets, January 4th, 2016, and special meeting from January 11th. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Aaron. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We have two reports tonight. First up is Market at the Square Annual Report. Natalie Kenny-Marcas.
Hi. Thank you for giving me a few minutes this evening to report on the 2015 season of Urbana's Market at the Square. My name is Natalie Kenny-Marcas and I'm the Marketing Coordinator and Director of Urbana's Market at the Square. I hope you've had a chance to read through our 2015 annual report. Staff has worked hard the past couple of years to present the information to you in a format that better represents the vivid colors, diverse products, and inviting atmosphere of the farmer's market. We think we've been able to carry that over into this year's report and to better bring it to life, we want to show you a quick video summary of the farmer's market. So, we like this statement at the end of the video that says, "The market creates community around food. The farmer's market is a way to connect our community with local food growers and producers. It strengthens our local food economy and provides access to local artisans. In addition, Urbana's Market at the Square serves as a community gathering place." Illinois ranks third in the country for the number of farmer's markets, and at Urbana's Market at the Square, we're proud to rank as one of the top farmer's markets in the state of Illinois. Evidence shows that farmer's markets are significantly improving the health and well-being of the community, economy, and environment. I believe we are seeing that firsthand here in Urbana, and the farmer's market is excited to be at the forefront of the local food movement. 2015 was another successful year for the farmer's market, like the video said, with over 127,000 visitors attending the farmer's market during the 28-week season. That means roughly 4,500 visitors attended the market each week. Staff is especially proud of the success of our SNAP, which is Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and WIC, Women, Infants, and Children Programming. During the 2015 season, Urbana's Market at the Square distributed just over $15,000 combined in combined SNAP. That's an $8,000 increase from last year. Additionally, the market was able to increase WIC Farmer's Market voucher redemption rates from 35% to over 80%, just during the months of June, July, August, September, and October. Overall, it was a tremendous success in another fantastic way that Urbana is able to expand access to healthy, fresh, locally grown and prepared foods. Staff is already searching out ways to continue to expand these programs in 2016. And speaking of programming, the market offered free all-ages programs nearly every Saturday during the season. Events included Read at the Market with the Urbana Free Library, Bike to Market Saturdays with Champaign County Bikes, Art at the Market and Performance at the Market with the Urbana Public Arts Program, and Sprouts at the Market, which is our very own farm linkage and nutrition programming geared toward children ages three to eight years old. In 2016, we're planning to add chef demonstrations and highlight local restaurants committed to sourcing ingredients from our farmer's market vendors, and we'll be sure to provide you with the full schedule of that over the next few months. Revenue remains steady in 2015, and staff is proud to report that we were able to keep expenditures steady too, both very similar to our numbers from last season, which are reported in the printed report and on the screen. Staff is working hard to help make our farmer's market more financially sustainable and a more self-sufficient program of the city of Urbana. Before I wrap up, I want to make sure you each saw the hot pad and recipe cards I left for you at your seat. These were created and distributed by the farmer's market on a weekly basis, depending upon what items were in season. Staff also regularly cook these recipes live on WCIA News Channel 3's afternoon program, CI Living, and we're already working on continuing this program in 2016 and to bring you another set of the recipes. They all cost under $2 per serving, feature local ingredients, and were a pretty big hit this season. And as if we couldn't possibly pack any more into our off-season, we're working on updating the Market at the Square Strategic Plan. There's currently a survey available for community groups, patrons, and vendors. The survey closes at the end of the month, and the Market at the Square Advisory Board will sort through these at an upcoming meeting, the survey results. And we'll be sure to share the information as it's available, and we'll always keep our valued participants and supporters in the know through social media and website updates. We're grateful to the community partners and organizations that promote our market, the numerous city of Urbana departments and divisions that assist us on a day-to-day basis, and to mayor and the city council for your continued support of the farmer's market and for making it a priority to improve the health and well-being of our community.
Questions for Natalie. Aaron.
So Natalie, thank you very much for all of your work on this. I really am inspired by it. It looks like it's growing and it's doing great things. I really appreciate you and Brandon going out knocking door-to-door with me and Lincoln at Hamilton on the park, and I'm looking forward to seeing things expand and us getting out to the community even broader again, and maybe hopefully getting some young people to have their own little location at the market as well. So, one of my questions is in relationship to two things. One is the music that we see. Is that something that's ... Does that person have to pay to play at the market? How does the music and the art component work?
Sure. There's a couple of different ways that we offer music and art programming at the market. The first is through the Public Arts Program. It's the second Saturday of every month, and there's actually a call-out right now from the Urbana Public Arts Program, looking for artists for the arts workshops and performers for the performance component. And there is a small stipend given to the artists and performers that host those workshops on a monthly basis.
So, the call is out now to get people to host the workshops?
Yep. They can submit some information about themselves, a little bit about the workshop that they would plan, or the music that they would play, and there'll be a jury that will go through all of those applications. The other option is that at the market, we offer space for buskers or performers to come and play for a couple of hours at a time in a few different locations, and there's no cost for that. They just have to fill out an application. That way, we know their name, and sometimes we have customers that search out those performers later to hire them for different events, so it's nice to have their information on hand so that we can share that if they're willing to have that information shared. So, that application is online at the farmer's market's webpage on the city's website.
And the other question was in relationship to ... You said revenue was about $78,000, almost $79,000 this year. What ... How much of that is actually ... Is that profit? What is that? Can you break that down a little bit for me as to where that money goes and all that kind of stuff?
Our revenue comes from vendor fees and farm inspections, which we do for all new growers that come to market, as well as sale of market merchandise, like t-shirts or tote bags, or things that promote Urbana's Market of the Square as a whole. And then the expenditures that were listed in there, that's what we use to pay for staffing and promotions and supplies, and you know, if a tent breaks during the middle of the season, repairing or replacing the tent, things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill? And then Eric.
Yeah, as far as the expenditures go, I know you often have help at the tent, so are any of the other salaries from other employees included in the expenditures?
They are. Yes. And they're part-time seasonal staff that usually work just Saturday mornings. Occasionally, we'll have some weeks where we'll have a lot of the link tokens to count or reconcile, and so someone will come in and help me count all those tokens out, but otherwise, just Saturday mornings.
Okay. I think you're doing a wonderful job with the marketing. I like the Urbana Market at the Square emails that come out once a week with the kind of catchy headlines, like "Illinois-Grown Sweet Corn is Amazing," and all those kind of corny things. You know, I think it kind of epitomizes kind of the ... If there is Urbana sensibility, it's kind of, don't take yourself too seriously, and I think that does kind of catch that. I don't know if it'll go more than one or two seasons. It'll probably get old and you'll get tired of thinking of new headlines.
I've run out of vegetable puns. Twenty-eight was my max.
Need more vegetables.
If anybody has some they want to send for this season, I got to think of something else creative to do, but that was ... No, I don't have any more.
The other thing I've noticed recently was I got my first smartphone in October, finally, and so I tend to check Facebook a little bit more than I used to, and I've noticed that for the art ... The call for the art grants, that's showing up on my Facebook page quite a bit, so that's pretty effective.
We must have targeted you.
Pardon me?
There's Facebook-sponsored posts that you can do and target certain audiences.
Right, yeah. So, I guess I have Urbana somewhere in my Facebook profile or something, so maybe it targets me.
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah, that and I think there was something else that shows up on Facebook, so I don't know if the market's doing Facebook, but I suppose you are. Seems like a big portion of the expenditures was promotion, right? About a third?
Yeah.
Is that typical? Is that what it's been the past few years?
Yeah, it's pretty much stayed the same. We haven't changed a lot on what we spend on promotions and always trying to search out free promotions or things that we can do, like Facebook or Twitter. Instagram was really great for us this past season.
Okay. Yeah, thanks a lot. You know, I wish we had a little bit more attractive shady area for you to put the market in, but I think, you know, it's a nice compact space where everybody can get in there and get what they want, but it'd be nice if we had someplace with a little bit more flow and more trees and more places to sit down, relax, things like that.
Thanks.
Eric.
So, just an idle thought from this exchange a couple of minutes ago. I wonder if it would be interesting to do a public contest for stupid slogans built around vegetable puns.
I think we'd get an excellent return on that.
Uh-huh. And but the other thing is, I'm really happy to have the recipe cards, but I did a quick look. They're not ... The recipes are not posted, are they, online?
They're on the city's website. Underneath the market page, there's one called Farm Fresh and Fast.
Oh, okay.
And they're all on there, the front and back posted on there. We're going to figure out a nicer way to display it as we add more with the next season coming, but they're on there. We also posted it on Facebook each week and had the actual recipe cards printed out to give to customers that came to the tent, whether they're there to ask for information or to inquire about redeeming their WIC vouchers or using their SNAP benefits. We were always sure to have them right there and highlight where you could find the ingredients. They were popular.
For those who don't know, Natalie stars in a local cooking show. Do you want to plug that at all?
That was the recipe cards, yeah. That was ... Nothing like cooking live on TV.
Yeah. Dennis and Diane.
This is scarier than that. No, I'm just kidding.
So, one of the things that I looked at in the report and I thought was a very positive sign was the increase in the use of SNAP, the SNAP program. One of my concerns has been how to try to encourage more low-income families to come to the market to look for produce. It's not always really clear to me that I see that happening, and I think it's kind of a challenge, so ... But apparently, from the growth in the use of this SNAP program over last year, it sounds like things are improving, and ...
So, maybe you could also tell me a little bit about the Market Scratch, how that relates to your SNAP program?
That's the name of our SNAP program at the market. It's called Market Scratch.
Oh, it has the name itself.
Yeah. And that's really the program that we have, the tokens, and so if a customer has a link card, which is the card that SNAP benefits are loaded onto here in Illinois, they'll come use their link card at the tent, swipe it just like you would with a credit card, and then we offer $1 tokens to use, same as cash, at eligible vendors. We have a list of the eligible vendors, what row you can find them, and on the back is a map that shows where you can find them. Also listed on there are all of the vendors that are eligible to accept the WIC Farmer's Market vouchers. That's only produce, whereas with SNAP, it's produce, meat, dairy, honey, fruit-bearing plants, nuts. I think that covers it pretty much.
And is there a program specifically geared to students?
There may be the potential that a student could be eligible to receive the SNAP benefits, but these are all programs through the federal and state level, and so we have to obey by their guidelines.
Diane.
I just wanted to say, the farmer's market is one of my absolute favorite things that I love about Urbana, and being on the advisory board to the market is one of my favorite jobs as city council member, so I want to emphasize the request for feedback on our strategic plan, and if people want to take the survey, and it includes just about everybody, if you're a patron of the market, which includes just visitors of the market, even if you don't buy anything but come for the community, if you're a vendor at the market, if you're one of the community groups that comes to the market, take the survey and let us know what you think and what, you know, what suggestions you have. And it can be found on the city of Urbana website. If you click on the Residents tab at the top, the survey is right there on the page. It's very easy to find, so I hope people will take a few minutes and answer the survey and let us know what you think. Because we actually, when we wrote the strategic plan a few years ago, we've systematically implemented many of the suggestions that the community had back then and will continue to do so.
Thanks.
Others? Mike.
So, just real quick, I want to say thanks. My family really enjoys the market as well. I grew up on a farm, so I had to usually spend way more time weeding vegetables than getting to actually buy and eat them. Well, I didn't have to buy them, but it's nice to come and have a great variety and buy them. Speaking of variety, I'm noting on all these recipe cards, there's something missing.
Meat.
Yeah. That's very near and dear to me.
It is to me as well.
So, maybe I can work with you next year to work a couple in, you know? I don't think it would hurt.
We added some meat to some of the recipes after our meat vendors got a little down on us, so we incorporated some on the cooking show and the difference in how you could add it in there.
Well, I know Aaron might not support me in that, but it's just something I feel strongly about, so.
Got to appeal to all of our audiences at the market.
Well, thanks.
Sure.
And I do appreciate your efforts to continue to try to make it, make the market revenue neutral. I do think that's a very important goal.
Thanks.
Okay, so the question I had was, what new and exciting do you have in the works for next year? I know you want to try to expand the WIC and SNAP program to people, and the strategic plan will probably help guide some of the things, but are there some initial things you want to share with us?
Definitely the chef demonstrations. They'll happen the fourth Saturday of the month. That's the one Saturday we don't have programming happening, so it's a natural fit. So, working with some different restaurants in Urbana and Champaign that support our market vendors, having them out at the market to do some demonstration, some sampling. There's some changes in the sampling laws in Illinois that'll go into effect during the season, so I'm excited to report that our vendors will be able to offer more samples to customers, so that's an exciting thing to add. And it's still January, so we have a little more time to come up with some good things come May.
No, it sounds very good. So, once again, I guess encourage people, whatever your interaction with the market is, to take the survey. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Champaign County Multi-Jurisdictional Investigative Team Overview, which I'll let Chief Connolly introduce everybody. Senator Seraphin is ...
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. A very short introduction. Master Sergeant Mike Atkinson from the Illinois State Police, and all of you know Lieutenant Bryant Seraphin from our police department. A few weeks ago, Mr. Ammons and I were speaking about just things in the community, and one of the questions that he posed was, how did the police address police-involved shootings and other police-related investigations? This presentation was provided to the community coalition folks shortly after Ferguson, when that question was posed in the community, so I thought it was a perfect opportunity for these guys graciously volunteered to come in this evening, kind of provide you with an overview and answer any questions from an operational standpoint, and then policy-wise, I can address those questions if there are any. So, without further ado, we'll let these guys take the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Bryant Seraphin. I'm a lieutenant here with the police department, and I have been here for, well, I'm in my 22nd year now, and I was fortunate enough to spend a bit of time in our investigation section. And as part of those responsibilities, one of the things that I was involved with heavily is this team, which is why I'm here tonight. And Michael introduced himself a little bit more, I guess, in just a second. But what we wanted to do tonight was to give this council a flavor of what would happen, and specifically for us here, I guess, if an Urbana police officer gets involved in a shooting, or there's an in-custody death here, or something like that that would happen tonight here, what happens? How do we move forward? What does the investigation kind of look like? So, that's our goal tonight, is to, I guess, give you guys a bit of an education on what that would look like, and then you give you guys a chance to answer, ask us a few questions. So, tonight, we're going to discuss the purpose of this team. We'll kind of go over a little bit of history, kind of how it came to be about, who's on the team, what is the structure of the multi-jurisdictional investigative team, a couple of slides even on an investigation. That's a term that we use, but what does that really mean? What is an investigation? What are some of the components of it? And then, when that investigation is done, who reviews it? Who looks at it? What are the different sort of bodies that would be out there that would want to look at our investigation? Clearly, a critical incident like this in our community is extremely emotional and has a lot of questions that can come up, and I hope that tonight, by doing this, we can let our community know what's happening and build some trust with that. So, there's the overview, and Mike, I guess I'll throw the next slide at you, then.
My name is Mike Atkinson. I'm a Master Sergeant in the Illinois State Police. I've been in law enforcement for about 26 years, and I've been with the state police for 20 years. Most of that has been in investigations. What ... Anybody who sees troopers might know of District 10, that's our patrol area. I work for Zone 5, which is just a different way of saying our investigative area is what encompasses District 10 and District 6. So, we, in the investigative zones in the state police, we do often involve shooting investigations for other departments. In my investigative area, it covers about 12 counties. So, this area has kind of a nice, special situation where they have this team, and this team's been around since about the late 1990s, and we'll get into that a little bit. But so, what happens is, this team has had many different kind of names to it, but it's designed to investigate serious use-of-force cases and in-custody deaths involving law enforcement in this area, the Champaign County area, and it's pursuant to the chief and sheriff's request. So, they basically call and get the team activated. The idea is the team provides an unbiased and independent investigation in the review of what happened. We share resources and personnel, and it enhances the capabilities of all of us. It gives us a standardized response so that we kind of know what's going to happen every time, and it adds an element of integrity by making sure it's not just one department investigating themselves. What I like to say, to make this slide make sense, it's like baking a cake. At the end, you all have a recipe to bake a cake, and you may do it a little bit differently, but the standardization that it's going to give us, so when we get done with this, it's still going to be a cake. Now, things may change along the way. You never can tell exactly what's going to happen in an investigation, but the idea is, we always know where we're starting and we always know where we're going to end. Let's see if we can advance the history here. I touched on it a little bit a minute ago, but this has basically been in practice, and it wasn't formalized, but it's been in practice since the late 1990s. The first one I can remember being involved with on the fringes is 1997, was when this kind of started. But the idea was, in the beginning, it would be supervisors from each agency would have two supervisors that would be attached to this team. That kind of became impractical because I know in our organization, if you pull two supervisors out of my investigative unit, we're going to be out of supervisors. So, it worked like that for a while, and then it morphed back into, hey, we'll use investigators. But the idea was formed in 1999 as a serious use-of-force response team, and that later became what we have now, what we know as a Champaign County Multi-Jurisdictional Investigative Team. The agreement that we have right now was established in 2013, and it focused on the concept of the team being led by the state police. We do this a lot throughout our investigative areas, so the idea was, well, we do these a lot by ourselves, and this kind of becomes a force multiplier. I only have so many agents available to me, so when we have this team, I have many more people that I can rely on. And the idea with the local agencies was the team concept, but it to be led by the state police, and that it just puts our experience at the beginning of the team, but there are things local investigators can do just by memory that it would take an agent that I might bring in from Bloomington, he wouldn't be able to get across town where a local investigator could find it like the back of his hand. So, the agency that requests it, that starts the team, they're merely the host. They don't have any investigative responsibility at all.
And I'll touch on that a bit, yes, and that's something I think is absolutely critical with regards to this team, that if tonight, an Urbana officer were to get involved in a shooting, the Urbana police would only play a support role in the investigation of that event. So, we would facilitate with space, with food, with helping to download videos from squad cars, with a lot of those sort of support things, but the Urbana police detectives that would be called to help would not interview the eyewitnesses, they would not interview the involved officers, they would be ... And that's part of the idea here, is that it's, there's a step back, and there's this sort of barrier from the Urbana police investigating their own, and that we would have these other agents from all the different organizations come forward. Having been involved in many of these over the last decade, I can tell you that by having the local police departments involved gives, is so helpful, that if we were to just call the state police, like perhaps other departments might do in other counties, they simply have six or eight guys show up. We can bring officers from, detectives from the whole county here, and we can have 25, and we can begin to really jump on that investigation when it's early, when it's fresh, when it's ripe for us to work on it, to find the witnesses, to determine where the video is that we need, and essentially to work the investigation. So, I didn't want that point to ever get lost, that we have a ton of extra help with all the agencies participating, and I think that just really makes for a much faster, more expedient investigation. The other thing that Mike touched on, again, with regards to that, local agents involved, detectives who work here, and I know Chief Connolly has said this many times, that crime doesn't stop at Wright Street, and Urbana detectives routinely running over to Champaign and vice versa, doing follow-up and working on cases. We develop certain knowledge, develop knowledge and facts and know things about that other community, and we've worked these before where that has been. from the, all the different organizations come forward. Having been involved in many of these over the last decade, I can tell you that by having the local police departments involved gives, is so helpful, that if we were to just call the state police, like perhaps other departments might do in other counties, they simply have six or eight guys show up. We can bring officers from, detectives from the whole county here, and we can have 25, and we can begin to really jump on that investigation when it's early, when it's fresh, when it's right for us to work on it, to find the witnesses, to determine where the video is that we need, and essentially to work the investigation. So I didn't want that point to ever get lost, that we have a ton of extra help with all the agencies participating, and I think that just really makes for a much faster, more expedient investigation. The other thing that Mike touched on, again, with regards to that, local agents involved, detectives who work here, and I know Chief Conley has said this many times, that crime doesn't stop at Wright Street, and Urbana detectives routinely running over to Champaign, and vice versa, doing follow-up and working on cases. We develop certain knowledge, develop knowledge and facts, and know things about that other community. And we've worked these before where that has been absolutely critical. And when, we've had incidents in either city that the state police might not know, because they won't know the neighborhoods as well. And they won't know necessarily Mrs. McGillicuddy, who lives on the corner. We might have a detective that knows that and can help guide some of those things. So I think that's a critical component to this team, that we would lose if we simply threw our hands up and said, well, the state police are here to investigate this officer-involved shooting.
The structure itself consists of these members here on the screen. I'm going to read through them, and they have been involved since the beginning, but it's the Champaign Police Department, Champaign County Sheriff's Office, Champaign County State's Attorney's Office, Illinois State Police, Mohammed Police Department, Parkland College Police Department, Rantoul Police Department, University of Illinois Police Department, and Urbana Police Department. So if you'll notice, out of all those folks, when we, when this team is activated, what's nice for not only me, and the state police, and for the other executives of these other departments, it doesn't strap anybody completely of all their, of all their personnel. So, so you look at that, there's nine folks, if every, if every person there, well, you don't have to take away one, one department, because usually one will be the requesting agency, and they won't have people on the investigative support part. But even if I just get two people from each department, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good workforce right there.
And I'll just jump in for Mike here. There is, if the state police are involved in a shooting, they have their own entity that does that. So if a trooper were to get involved in a shooting on 57 or 74 tonight, this team would not be called in. The state police has their own people that would do that.
Could you define serious use of force, before you go any further?
Well, for purposes of this, it's an also-involved shooting. But if, for some reason, there was a, well, it would be up to the chief and sheriff to decide, this is a use of force that we think the team ought to investigate. That's really the best way I can define that. I don't have a checklist of exactly when the chiefs decide this team, but for the most part, it's for also-involved shootings, things like that.
And then, it can be, there can be other incidents where we've had, I remember working on one 15 years ago, where there was, someone was body slammed, and they ended up going hos, and there was some hospitalization afterwards. Didn't occur in Urbana, but there could be a variety of things. If someone were using a stick, a PR-24, ASP collapsible baton, there could be some other uses of force that were, there's death or great bodily harm. And what Mike touched on is that the chief, or the sheriff of whatever agency, they were the, we the ones who ultimately would decide. So you could have maybe similar circumstances, or one chief might want to call the team out, and the other chief might not want to call the team out.
Thank you.
So, moving on with this next slide, in the agreement that's now on this team, it's agreed that the state police will provide the leadership. So what that means is, we have a team commander, and that's usually me. What that also means is, there will be a case agent, and the case agent will always be a state police agent, usually it's someone from my office. So, so while the team is activated, as far as the investigation goes, I will be in charge of it. Or another master sergeant, or a lieutenant, or someone like that. For the most part, it's me, because this is my area. So, the resources that are available to the team, state police special agents, local police detectives, county sheriff investigators, crime scene investigators, both ours and from the local department, state's attorney investigators, assistant state's attorneys, and the Champaign County Coroner's Office, if applicable. So what that means is, we may have uniformed officers that are securing a scene, or blocking traffic, or things like that, but the investigative part of it is going to be done by detectives that are assigned to this team, and basically assigned to me. Other resources that are not on the slide, but I always like to point out is, whatever the state police has, is available to those two. So whether it's, whether it's air ops, need aerial photographs of something, or if we need an unmanned aerial device, a drone, they don't like me calling it that, but for aerial pictures or something, or if we need traffic crash reconstruction units. So if, if the incident involves a crash, then the state police traffic crash reconstruction unit is also available.
Do you have the actual, in our agreement?
I do.
I think the definition might be in there. So, several years ago, I attended a class down at the University of Louisville on managing major cases. And one of the instructors was a fellow by the name of Charles Hemp, and he's at the Southern Police Institute within the university. And he presented this, and he called it his four building blocks of investigation. And it seems very simple, but I think at the end of the day, it helps us to explain, what are we doing in some of these investigations? And let's, when we, when we cut it all down, cut everything away, this is what we're doing. So, essentially, in these investigations, we would be talking to the subject involved, the person upon whom the force was used. We would be getting a statement from the involved officers, as far as to their observations. The witnesses are key. Those witnesses can either be other police, other civilians, and those are the things that, especially at the beginning, when those initial patrolmen are responding to an incident, that we want those patrolmen to go out and to find that, before those people wander off, go back into their homes. We want them to, before they get in their car to go to dinner, I want them, I want those patrol officers out there trying to knock on the doors and finding that. Now, in my example, they would be Urbana policemen. And so what would happen in that particular case, if we found the Mrs. McGillicuddy, who's, I saw the whole thing, officer, very good, we would get her name and her phone number, that patrolman would, and then they would bring it back to the team, so that Mike could assign an impartial detective to go out and do that follow-up with that woman. The last piece is sort of, I guess, then, all the other things that happen, which is the scene examination, the video recordings, lab work, and there's a whole bunch of things that would go in into that piece. But essentially, what we try to do is take this sort of template and put, making sure that we're going through these things, and with other checklists we have, that we get the bases covered. But in its, at its purest form, this would be the investigation that we're doing that night.
One concept that is a little, I think, difficult to get your arms around, but we try to explain it like this, we call it parallel investigation. So, what the team really is not designed to do is investigate everything under the sun. So, in the italics, you'll see, the one that we think really describes it and makes it make sense. Imagine a bank robbery occurs in Rantoul, the suspects are confronted in Urbana where a shootout happens. Ran, the team, then, when the team is called, would investigate the shooting, the use of force. I'm not going to be sending people to Rantoul to investigate the bank robbery that happened. That's going to be the Rantoul detectives. So that kind of makes it, now, that doesn't mean that the two shall never mix. Kind of the closer things become in proximity, then the more they overlap, but that dilutes what the team's trying to do. So, I only have so many resources, and every department has given me so many folks. So, in that particular case, there may not be any Urbana folks assigned to the team, because they may be busy, or I mean, sorry, Rantoul folks assigned to the team. They may be busy investigating a bank robbery, unless it happened three days prior, then they probably would assign a couple of folks. But the idea is, the team itself, it's to investigate the use of force, that's what it's for. It's not to decide if, you know, was there, did the bank robber come in the front door or the back door? That's a completely different issue. Now, and I'm careful when I talk about that, because I don't want folks to think that there's a bright line between the two crimes. There's really not, and at the end of the day, when everything's turned over to the prosecutor, it will probably get painted with the same brush by the prosecutor's eyes, because it may overlap, and that's fine. But what I try to do is, I keep the needle pointing in the middle. So if the, if it starts leaning towards the parallel crime, I don't want to put all my resources on that, I want to keep them on the prime, the prime idea here.
And there are times when, that we had, there was one in Champaign several years ago, where it's kind of was a domestic incident, and the Champaign police were responding, working on the domestic incident, the shooting erupted, so it was all sort of very, one, very much one event, that this team then handled throughout. But there are times when, and as you stretch across time and space, it becomes easier to see, that if Chicago police are working a bank robbery, and for some reason, we find the bad guys at Main and Vine, and something happens, well, that's pretty easy. But as we shrink that down, it sometimes gets a little trickier to understand.
So, at the end of all this, there's all these reviews. So, you'll keep in mind what we talked about on that last slide. The investigation itself is of the use of force, the criminal use of force. So, you have all these different folks reviewing it, I'm going to run through them and kind of give you an idea of what they're going to do. So the Champaign County State's Attorney's Office, they are going to review this for charges, all right? Criminal charges. That's, that's the bread and butter of what we will be investigating. The police department, or the sheriff's office, they look at policy compliance, training needs. The city and county legal departments will look at legal and liability concerns. Champaign County Coroner's Office will have an inquest. Department of Justice or the FBI, they may be looking into it for civil rights violations. So, what I think is a, is a kind of a difficult concept is, the investigation is going to be thorough, it's going to end up with a three-ring binder, with every report, every video, everything we can get our hands on, but, but we are not going to be in here deciding, well, was that patrolman outside of his beat? Or did that patrolman, did he, did he have, was he qualified on his secondary weapon? So those are all policy issues, that's not the purpose of the investigation. Now, that investigation in the package will be handed off to the chief of police, and that, he does get to look through it and decide, well, we have training needs, we have policies that need to be addressed, that's fine. But the investigation itself, that this team is after, is really aimed at that first bullet point, the Champaign County State's Attorney. Now, what happens is, anybody else involved in here, if they have other stuff they need to do, if there's an internal investigation that needs to proceed down the line, that doesn't mean they can't build on that investigation. And that doesn't mean we turn the tap off. If there's information that we need to get, we will. But, but for the most part, it starts out with the Champaign County State's Attorney's Office. Now, after that, it proceeds to these, to these other entities.
I wanted to mention here, as well, that there is, recently in January 1st, the Police and Community Relations Act of 2016 went into effect. And there have been several things that people have heard about, whether there's detention stop cards, and body camera regulations and whatnot. One of the things that was passed, it's right in the beginning of Public Act 99-352, talked about officer-involved death investigations, where officer-involved death, not of the officer, but of a civilian. And in Section 1-10, it talks about having a written policy on how to deal with officer-involved death investigations. It talks about having at least two investigators involved. It discusses that no investigator involved in the investigation may be employed by the law enforcement agency that employs the officer involved in the officer-involved death. In other words, all the things that we've been doing for 16-plus, 15, 20 years, however it's been exactly, but since, but since 1999 at least, with the original formalized team, I just wanted to point that out, because I thought that was important, that where we have been, the rest of the state is trying to catch up now. So, I just wanted to mention that, and...
I had a question for you, just, it sounds like, are you guys done with the presentation?
We are, but I can answer Ms. Marlin's question that she asked a little while ago. Let me hit that one first. So, so, a general guideline for a serious use of force, as far as the team is concerned, is law enforcement in custody deaths, use of force involving a firearm where a citizen is injured in any way, use of force where a citizen is seriously injured or killed, and any other similar criminal investigation perceived or articulated as a conflict, and due to its complexity is requested by the effective chief, or is designated, and agreed upon by the commander or the supervisor. So it's kind of a catch-all. So, so that's a hard question. I don't know that there is an answer. What is a serious use of force? That's, that's a general guideline, and the chief, or the chief executive will call to activate the team if it's necessary.
I'm sure I'll have other questions later, but I was really just trying to separate, it sounded like you mentioned two different pieces of legislation, and I wanted you to just, if you would, back up and clarify. Were you talking about two different things or the same?
No, well, I'm talking about the one act, the public, the new, the Police and Community Relations Improvement Act, which is Public Act 99-0352. And within that, there was then multiple pieces that were, some were put with stop, pedestrian stop card stuff, or body cam stuff, and some of this also had to do with the topic that we're going over tonight, as well.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was just one, I thought you were talking about two.
So, I wonder, I have a few questions. I can just do one, and then let other folks have turns, or I can run through them. But one of my questions is, how would you feel about defining use of force, or including the definition of use of force, requiring medical treatment as a result of the encounter? And I'm thinking of two particular types of force. One is restraint in a stress position, which sometimes results in death, as in the case of the person in New York. Or, and the other is baton strikes. Those, and, you know, those also can result in very serious injury, or even contribute to a death in custody. And so, I mean, they're not, so would a definition, would including a definition of requiring medical treatment, would that be consistent with what we're trying to do here?
I think in this particular case, what we're trying to do here is, those types of issues, the medical treatment and whatnot, is already done and over by the time this team comes out. So I think with regards to requiring, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're wanting some sort of medical treatment required as part of the definition?
Yeah, I'm saying that the investigation should be, if the encounter resulted in requirement for medical treatment, that that should trigger an investigation.
I think there are a lot of injury situations that occur, that might require someone, then they end up going to, my head hurts, or my neck hurts, or I have certain things, and we'll go get a release at the county jail, which is fairly routine, but doesn't rise to the level of the design concept of this team. Again, this was initially, its predominant use is for officer-involved shootings. We do, you do in custody deaths, the team does do those as well. So whether that's incidents at the jail, most likely, but I suppose it's possible that we would, while interviewing someone here in our interview room, we could have an event that this could apply to.
If I could pose one more question, I'm a little concerned about the fact that although the members of the team, the investigative team, are coming from different agencies, they come from agencies that sometimes collaborate with the Urbana police. I guess I'm thinking especially of the state's attorney's office, which is almost, which is always working with all the police in the county. So, how would you feel about a designated, independent investigator taking the place of the state's attorney's office, as far as, as far as, you know, actually investigating and making judgments on what had happened?
I think I'm going to defer that one as a policy decision to the chief of police. So if you want to jot that down, and when he comes to join us, maybe we can hit that one, perhaps beyond the scope of the operation, as far as investigating the crime, or the incident here, yes. Go ahead.
Just one more question. When are witness accounts most... When are witness accounts most reliable? Immediately after the incident, or a little bit later? Because sometimes people, you know, sometimes people's memory, or what they think is their memory, sometimes changes. And do you think it becomes more accurate in a couple of days, or less accurate, or impossible to say?
Well, fortunately, I do not have a PhD in psychology or anything like that. I can tell you that a lot of the readings, it will, I think it varies some. We will usually try to interview people right away. Every detective I know has a stack of business cards, and will say, if you think of anything, we can, we've also gone and reached back out to someone to try to re-interview them if they're very critical. And some of these same principles that we use here, the same ones that we use on other shooting investigations or other high-profile events that occur. But with regards to exactly what I think as far as when memory is most accurate, I'll leave that to the experts.
Dennis?
So, it sounds like a very important tool for the community. How is it funded? And what part does each individual city who requests service interact and bear as far as the expense of the investigation? Is this completely state-funded?
It is. Each agency is responsible for paying their own people that go and respond and work. So, the Urbana pays for the Urbana detectives, Champagne pays for the Champagne detectives, and the state pays for theirs. And I don't know if you, I thought that was actually in the inter-agency agreement specifically.
It is. So, there is no funding. It's, we're working normally. So, right, if the state pays for my gas, Urbana pays for his gas, Rantoul pays for their gas. The only time I can think that there might be a funding issue is if we needed cellphone records, and the cellphone company said, well, gosh, it's gonna be fifty dollars a page or something. Well, then, that would be the responsibility of the requesting agency. So, yeah, that's the only time, really, there's any funding issue. It could happen that there was some sort of a reason, somebody needed to travel out of state, we would just have to cross that bridge when they come to it. But there's no funding, it doesn't cost anybody anything.
When you take statements from involved officers, do you take them immediately after an incident, or are they given a certain amount of time after an incident before they're required to make a statement? I think it's part of contracts in some areas, I'm just curious what we have in Urbana.
Currently, we will leave that up to the officer. So, we've had officers who wanted to talk right away, and said, I'm ready to talk, and let's have a conversation. We've had others that would want the FOP attorney, and then there's logistics involved sometimes with that, and will want a couple of sleep cycles. But we will give that decision to the officer involved.
Is there a time limit, or it's open-ended?
I wouldn't say it's open-ended. Clearly, sometimes the investigation can get stalled if we have to wait too long because we wanna go and corroborate and do other things. But there isn't an exact number of days that is written down, that all the chiefs agree to, that we shall take in a statement from the officer within X days. I think there was one over the last couple of years that we had with some holidays and whatnot, that stretched out to a few days. Usually, we try to get them done within the first one, two days, three days, I don't...
The way I generally operate is, I tell the chief or commanding officer of the involved agency, I've got agents ready now. So, I don't have any control over their policies or their union contracts, but my, what I call my company line is, I've got agents here now, we can do it now, we can do it tomorrow, whenever, but I'll have people ready.
Do you think it makes a difference?
It's just hard to say. I like to have the information as quickly as I can get it, but that doesn't mean that's the right time. People's memories change, but it really is, I want the information whenever I can get it, that's how I look at it. And we've gone back to officers and re-interviewed them before, too, so...
So, again, thank you, gentlemen, for coming and for sharing this information. I find it to be something that's extremely important for the community, especially as we try to build relationships. And in the wake of what took place in Chicago with Laquan McDonald and the cover-up in Chicago, as well as some incidents that took place in our own cities, around with Kiwan Carrington, Toto Kayewu on I-74, and also recently with the gentleman in Rantoul, where the multi-jurisdictional team was involved. So, it's, there are a lot of questions about policy, about procedures and stuff like that. And so, I don't know where they may come. As I'm talking, I wrote a few questions down that would help me understand better. Can I have a copy of the slideshow, the presentation or the PowerPoint?
Yes.
'Cause I was trying to type everything down, and it would've helped me to be able to just look at it. So, in the case, Brian, you said, like, if there's something that happened tonight, and there was a dash cam video of what took place, what happens to that video immediately? Where does it go?
To our investigator. So, that's always the part that I tell people, I can't not have a local agency involved whatsoever because I can't download their video. So, generally, what will happen is, that local agency will have a tech person of some sort come in and download it. Well, once we, either me or the case agent gets a copy of it, it becomes evidence, so it becomes evidence in our case.
So, immediate, right after that camera, whatever, so I'm trying to sort of put a scene together, but there's a call, there's been an officer-involved shooting, and we know that there were video cameras there, that the squad cars were running, and there's video. How long is that car taken back, brought back here with the officers, and immediately this process begins of downloading that video?
Well, yes, but it depends on if that car is an integral part of the scene. So, I, the answer is yes, but it may not be like that. It may be as soon as the scene is processed, it may be as soon as the device can be downloaded. But promptly, it's treated as evidence at a crime scene.
And so, immediately, an officer-involved shooting and the death of a citizen or something like that immediately triggers the multi-jurisdictional team? Or Chief Conley would have to make that request, but it should happen immediately?
As soon as practicable, I guess, is what I, is what I'd say. But yes, typically, what would happen were this to happen tonight, I think immediately we want the sergeants, the supervisors, the officers on the scene to secure everything. That's what I want immediately, and then to get first aid and do whatever we have to do. And then, once they get things at least stabilized, then the phone tree will kick off, ultimately getting to Chief Conley as soon as we can.
But that scene is preserved so that the multi-jurisdictional team can come in and begin?
Yes.
At that time?
That is correct, yes. And whether that's inside or outside, or both, sometimes those things can throw, give us a monkey wrench, and we're trying to do all these things, and so the team will try to, the storm is coming, we need to get this outside stuff done now. Or it can wait, let's lead the, let's do, so it kinda depends, I guess. But yeah, traditionally, as soon as we can, once things are stabilized.
There's some variables and things that could happen that, you know, you have to be in the field, or so to speak, to understand the variables that would take place. You don't want a big storm to come and wash away some key evidence or something like that, right?
Right, that's right.
That's correct. And there's also a component of trying to get people who are out at coaching a Little League game, who are, or people who are home in bed and whatnot, the detectives and stuff, they gotta come, they have to try to get their thing stabilized, and then get in. So, there are some variables that we try, we can't control, but we try to do it as soon as we can.
Okay. And the individuals involved, I think I asked Chief Conley about this before, but I just wanted, for the public record, what, say there's two officers, you two were involved, two officers, Urbana officers were involved in this particular shooting tonight, and when the other officers show up on the scene, sergeants, lieutenants would show up as supervisors, I imagine, to take control of the scene, what happens to those two individuals at that time? Where do they go?
I can't speak for each agency how they are particularly gonna do it, but in general, that officer gives what's known as a public safety statement to a supervisor, 'cause we wanna know, are there other people injured? Well, the police as a whole need to know, is there a suspect loose, is there somebody injured, which way did you fire your weapon? But that officer is, has to abide by what his particular policy is with his department. But in general, they are taken back to the police department, and they're usually with a companion person that can't talk about anything, and then they, whatever notifications they have to make up through their chain of command is what they do. But that's all done before the team gets there.
Yes, see, that's what I was getting at, in this, there's some things that lead up to that, that are also a part of this. So, from an Urbana policy standpoint, what would happen with those two officers, after they give that public safety statement?
They would answer the public safety statement, which essentially is about, where else do we need to look for bullets that have flown down range, and what doors do we need to knock on, and is, what bad guy are we looking for, if any? Those officers then are brought back here, they are given a companion officer, and then they are, there's also then some, they can, there's a couple of different things you could do. They can, usually what we try to do is, we'll put them in a room where they're away from everyone else, and where we've, we have someone there who's at part so that they don't, do not talk about the incident. And we usually try to ensure that we could separate them, or traditionally, what we like to try to do is, it's a pretty traumatic event anyway, and so we'll try to put them in there with maybe a third, another third party that would say, yes, they didn't, we didn't, I was here the whole time, and the officers did not discuss the incident, we talked about Chicago Bears not making the playoffs, or something like that instead, okay?
So, you would talk about that a lot, and?
Yes.
The Bears not making the playoffs. And so, one of the reasons why this situation or this conversation is extremely important, I believe, from the community perspective, is because we're not gonna ignore the national scope and all the different things that are taking place, and the pressures that are put on the police department for transparency, right? So, for instance, in a situation like that, would the officers be in a videotaped room, or would they just simply be down here or someplace else in the police department, just in a particular room, just out of curiosity? Is that, is that, does the, securing the, that testimony and that statement, or securing the fact that there are no conversations, inappropriate conversations taking place, do you go to the extent of putting them in a videotaped place to make sure that there's no conversation taking place?
No.
No? Okay. All right, I'm just asking. I mean, because it's, we know, okay, there's a lot, I think Eric's question was that, there's a lot of friendships. We live in a small community, a lot of people know each other. Although it's different departments, Mohammed is thirteen, is it even thirteen miles away? Right, Rantoul, it's not even, I mean, we all live in the same community, so people have relationships, and there's some concern about conversations taking place that allow for testimony to be corrupt, or to sort of come together and we get our stories together. That's a concern, so I'm just gonna raise the question for people, right? One of the things that took place in the 2009 situation with Kiwan Carrington, and I'm sure the multi-jurisdictional team was brought in in that situation, one of the questions that one of the constituents sent me was about hands being swabbed in a situation where there's an officer-involved shooting for the city of Urbana. If there were two officers or one officer involved, if there were two in a particular place and a citizen was killed during the interaction, would you swab their hands to make sure you knew who fired the weapon?
I can answer, just from my own views on that, probably. In that particular situation, I'm gonna rely on my crime scene investigator, because my understanding from a non-trained crime scene type of person is gunshot residue kits are not very reliable. So, probably. But there's so many other factors, how long has it been, did anybody wash their hands, did anybody, you know, drink a glass of water? But probably. But I'm really gonna rely on what the crime scene investigator can tell me based on his training and his knowledge.
So, it's not policy, though? That's maybe, so, when we're dealing with the multi-jurisdictional team, what policy governs the multi-jurisdictional team? If you have all these other different entities there, my understanding from talking to Chief Cobb was that the, whoever calls you, basically, they have a person who's sort of in charge, and that department's policy sort of governs the multi-jurisdictional team. I may have misunderstood that, but hopefully you can clarify it for me.
Well, no, the, each department is covered by their own policy, so there's certain checklist and guidelines you need, I guess I misunderstand, but no, the policy that the involved officer falls under his policy by his chief. So, that's how that works. The multi-jurisdictional team, we do have this agreement that we follow, but for the most part, it's, I follow state police policy, I don't expect a Rantoul officer to follow a state police policy. Maybe I don't understand your question.
So, if it's a multi-jurisdictional team made up of several different departments, what governs that multi-jurisdictional team? What policies, what, is there a multi-jurisdictional set of policies that govern the behavior of the multi-jurisdictional team? You see what I mean?
Yes. There is, it's not an absolute checklist, checklist, it's a, it's an agreement that the chiefs have all signed off on, it's a general, it's a general idea, a general policy of how the team functions. But you have to keep in mind, the team is not a full-time, like a drug task force, so it's a, it's, it comes together as needed.
As needed, right.
Right, right.
But something like what I'm saying or suggesting, as a, even if it didn't give you any results, if you swabbed the hand and you didn't find anything, you still, it still could be a part of the multi-jurisdictional team policy and procedure, that if there's a weapon fired, we're gonna do this gun residue kit, just in case it produces some sort of evidence or something?
Yeah, I suppose it could be a part of a policy, I...
There's, the inter-agency agreement is a little more 10,000 feet than that, that the team functions under. I will say that, and I'm not an expert in GSR results, but I do know the GSR shows a lot of false positives. So, if he and I are on top of each other here, and then a gun goes off, that particulate matter, that what it's looking for can be enclosed, can be on my hands, can be on his hands, so I, I don't, I think if we're gonna discuss the GSR and the mandatory, that's, I think, Aaron, we're getting really deep down into the weeds of, I think, of what we're trying to do here tonight. But I don't know that it's necessarily anything that I would try to put into a policy here for all the agencies to operate under.
Well, I mean, maybe it's a longer discussion, and I'm not trying to get too deep into the weeds, I'm really trying to understand the process, but these are concerns around these situations where the multi-jurisdictional team is involved, and as we talk about building relationships and trust and all that type of stuff. The feeling from, in particular, the constituent who talked to me about this, was that they feel as though if that was a situation where myself and another person in the community was involved, and there was a gunshot or gunshot to ring out, then I would be tested, my hands and clothing would be tested. They feel, I mean, I could be wrong, if that's the policy, if that's not the policy, I could be wrong. I'm just sharing with you guys something that's coming from the community, and then we found, I think, is a reasonable request to ask that, you know, you do the testing and whether or not it's, because if it's a false positive, there can be an explanation for that. Hey, look, Brian shot the gun, but Mike was, they were wrestling around. So, I don't know, I'm just saying that that was one of the things that came up, and I thought it was appropriate to talk to the multi-jurisdictional team about it.
Sure. Okay. Bill?
Yeah, just a couple of things. If an officer involved was off-duty and then responded, well, because they heard it on the radio or somehow knew about it, are the procedures any different? And if, so can you do any drug or alcohol testing on people that were off-duty and responded?
Well, I'll answer part of it. So, as far as the investigation, no. If an officer is off-duty, it would still happen the exact same way. As far as policy for drug testing, that's an internal, that's what their, it's what their policy says.
Is that mostly controlled by union contracts, then, or?
Yeah, that's a part of, that's a part of.
Okay. And then, as far as, like, if there's circumstances surrounding how the response happened, how the incident command happened, that we want to look at for improvement in the future, it probably wouldn't necessarily be part of the immediate investigation that you hand off to the State's Attorney to see if they're gonna charge somebody. But how does that, how do we get to that stage of improvement? Is that something that would go to the chief, then? And it would probably involve different questions, because you aren't probably looking at that sort of thing. So, who investigates that? So who investigates that incident, control incident management type of thing? And especially in a situation where you have a SWAT team that is more than one agency involved, who, who investigates or evaluates how it was handled and kind of evaluates it for improvements?
Well, i- if you're talking about then the, the actual event, so in the Urbana officer involved tonight, that would be reviewed in-house by Urbana. People, we would review, did this work, did it not work? Does Sergeant so-and-so need more training or whatnot? We would do that internally. With regards to like a multi-agency SWAT team, such as our Champaign County Metro SWAT team, those commanders would get together and they would have, they would have their own reviews and say, did this, did this go well, did it not go well, can we improve, how can we improve? With regards to the actual, and the multi-jurisdictional team, it too will debrief and will have powwows and sit around and decide, did we do this right, what can we do better, how can we, how can we improve? One of the things that, for instance, that the team has decided that they have to do better at and assign simply by more resource allocation, is the abundance of video that we have now with regards to body cams and squad cars and the Circle K gas stations and all the, there's just, it's a full-time job somebody can keeping, going out, collecting, cataloging, finding videos. So one of the things that we've done now for future call-outs of this team would literally be to have a, this is the team video team, this is all they're doing, is collecting video, collecting discs and trying to categorize it, catalog it, make sure that we have all of it. Because it's so big, we used to, much different than walking into the gas station when I started and then handing you the VHS tape. And now it's a lot going on in that the sheer quantity of material. So that's something that came about as a result of post-event discussions by the multi-jurisdictional team.
So are those debriefings in routine and you can depend that that's going to happen? And are, is there a report somewhere after every incident that if somebody wanted to go back to five years later, they could say, well, this is what we did then, this is what we did now, and compare them, see how it worked out?
No, with, yes, they happen, no, there's not a report. We'll add addendums to our other agreements where we've talked or we've taught, we've, I know that, like I said, even if the video one just came up recently within the last year, I think. But that is, but yes, we do, we do debrief on all the incidents, though.
Okay, thank you. Diane?
I don't know if you, I don't know if you brought the data with you tonight, but how many, say in the last 10 years, how many times has this investigative team been called to investigate an incident in Urbana?
In Urbana?
For an Urbana officer related?
I'm, in the last 10 years, I believe there have been two, two times.
Two, where those both, those were shooting?
One was a shooting and one was an in custody death. One in 2006 and one in 2007. I'm fairly certain of that, but I, I wouldn't bet my next paycheck on it just yet.
I want to wrap up here. Aaron?
I'll try, Charlie.
Okay. Well, we have, we have people in the audience, we have, we have some business we've got to get done.
I'll try, Charlie.
Okay.
Is there a limit on how long the multi-jurisdictional team will be involved in a situation? Or give me an idea how long, what's the average length of time that you're involved in a situation?
We can usually get an investigation wrapped up in a couple of days. Now, what generally happens is the, the roomful of investigators is usually done within two or three days and they're all back to their respective departments and they're typing reports and things. Now, for us, for state police, that's our case for the next year, two, three. So it, it takes much longer for us because, because at the end of the day, it's, it's my case agent will be the one who is going to be gathering all the reports, putting them together, putting them in a binder, punching the holes, copying the DVDs, providing a copy to the chief, providing a copy to the state's attorney. But, but the nuts and bolts are usually done two or three days, something like that. But then you have, that's the actual, you know, boots on the ground footwork is what that is. But I, but in order to have some sort of a product to show the state's attorney, two or three weeks, sometimes four, it really depends on the volume of reports that have to be written, the number of DVDs that have to be watched. In fact, I was going to bring one tonight just to show you, we, it is a binder about that big. And it's, that's about, it seems like all of our binders, it seems like we usually get them in one full giant binder. So that, it takes a while to get it produced. But the, yeah, natural nuts and bolts of people on the ground having meetings, discussions and stuff, a couple of, two or three days, by the time there's something ready to be turned in, to be actually looked at, it's, it's going to be several weeks.
And if there is an officer who is, and I'd like for us to get some clarity, Brian, on what our actual policy is in Urbana? Because it was, it wasn't as clear cut as I would like the answer to be as to how long an officer can delay an interview, right? So, is, can you decline? Can the multi-jurisdictional team say, we don't, we don't, we don't think this is, this meets the standard for, like, in a serious use? You can't decline a shooting, I would imagine, you're going to have to come and do that one. But if it was a serious use of force and you're like, you know, you guys need to work that out over there, do you make that type of call?
It could happen. Most generally, it's not going to be that cut and dry. There's probably going to be a discussion between me and the chief and maybe a state's attorney or, but there's lots of times where that discussion can be had. And, but, but if it's something that's going on right now, it's, it's pretty much if the chief calls, the team's going to go.
Okay. So, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems to me that if a police officer feels that his or her actions might result in prosecution, then they have a right, they have the Miranda rights. Is that, is that true?
That's a whole issue for lawyers to discuss, but there are various schools of thought on that. And I just don't think this is the, the time for me to put out opinions. But, but for the most part, they are required to either write a report or give a report of their official actions. But in all seriousness, refusing to talk is a, is a, is a, is an issue that really is up to chiefs and attorneys and, yeah.
And I think one of my final questions would be in relationship to the officers who are involved. And I know it's keep, I know we're talking about multi-jurisdictional, but there's an overlap between the policy from the city that's involved, the agency making the request, and the multi-jurisdictional team. So, I, I recall in a conversation, it may have been with Chief Connolly, I'm not sure, about how, if you guys got into an altercation, the two officers, Urbana officers, tonight and a gunshot was involved or someone was shot and you guys were wrestling around out in the snow and in the cold, are you allowed to change clothes, wash your hands, do any of those things before you are, or, or, or not? I think that, I think there's some changes to that, but I, I'd like to know what happens in a situation like that.
I think we would do whatever is reasonable right now for those officers to, first of all, if there's, if you're talking about like a hazmat exposure and there's blood and, and that, yes, we would let the officers wash, just like we would let a citizen's wash the blood off. We would try to the best of our ability, depending on the situation, to leave their uniforms as they, as they were. So if the sleeve is torn and hanging, if we can, we would try to leave, leave that. If we can't, for everything, for the team gets there, because one of the things that the team, the, the crime scene techs will be to photograph each officer as they, as they appear. There are times if someone, where we recently had a bank robbery where the officer was in a creek and up to, no, we want you to get, we're not going to stay in wet clothes while we wait for an hour for everybody to get here. So we would try our best to preserve them, but with an eye towards, I guess, health and, and safety being something that we would be concerned about. So if that means washing the hands because there's blood, then we would do that.
I had another question and it's sort of escaping me now, but it's a, it's in relationship to the, the team itself. It's escaping me now, so. My other question, I think, was for the chief, I think he was going to answer that.
Yeah, actually, I, I have a question sort of to the chief and it's sort of a follow-up. I think is the, the Public and Community Relations Act that's come out and what kind of an impact that's going to have on the city. And that may be a, on a topic for another night. But if Chief Connolly wants to join in here, write some additional comments here and answers.
I'm sorry, I do remember. Because you brought up a very important component, but chief, you might as well stay. You spoke about the focus of the multi-jurisdictional team to try to create a, for lack of a better term, to create a case for the state's attorney. I wanted you to just elaborate on that a little bit as to your work, the multi-jurisdictional team's work is to first provide, to see if there was criminal act, I, I just, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
That's it in a nutshell, that's it in a nutshell. So, at some point, the footprint is, is a controllable size. So what I, what I tell people is if, hey, if, if, if this person was involved in, you know, witchcraft since they were 15 years old, we're not going to go clear back and recreate that person's life in their history in witchcraft or something. But, but if, so if there, if, if, the, our review, our case is no different than any other criminal case. So, so the state, if, if the Urbana Police Department has an internal investigation on an officer and it's completely internal, has nothing to do with, with, with a crime, an actual crime, then they're not going to call us to come in and do that. So it's the same thing with the team. The team is not there for internal reviews, internal investigations, we're there for a criminal investigation. Now, if it, if it, if it touches on other issues, training issues or policy issues, that's fine, but that's not our focus. Our focus is a criminal investigation. So that's it in a nutshell.
And when, for the multi-jurisdictional team, is there a standard that is higher that you must meet in presenting a case to the state's attorney? So if a civilian gets into a particular altercation where there's physical force, serious use of force involved, does that standard, is it the same for a police officer?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. I appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, chief, do you, do you have anything to add? And you might want to comment on what I just requested here.
Okay.
Yeah, the, you know, so are there other, other things that, that, that you'd like to address? And, and like I said, the Police and Community Relations Act, you know, what's that going to do for us? And is that a separate conversation or a separate presentation?
Well, if we're going to talk about all of the Police Community Relations Act, it's a very thick act. In fact, we were over at the, several of you were at the Independent Media Center and we were talking about a variety of those new laws. Bryant touched on this portion concerning the responsibility for police agencies to conduct investigations. And we've been way ahead of the rest of the state for some time with that respect. So I would probably say if you have other questions about body worn cameras and about the stop cards and those issues, we, we're going to be here awful late tonight.
No, no, I was going to say, is that a conversation, is that a presentation on another night?
If you would like one, I can present one.
Yeah, I don't know, is that something we're going to, I mean, down the road? It may have, it may have some budgetary implications as, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so I guess when you're ready, I, it would probably be appropriate to have a presentation on that, then.
Good. With respect, Mr. Jacobson, you posed the question about can we have a special prosecutor? And poor Bryant was looking at me like, you really want to address this, boss? Because I can't make those decisions and nor can I. I, all we do is present the information to the state's attorney, to Julie Reitz, the state's attorney, and she then makes the determination on where it goes from there with respect to the criminal charges.
The, my background for that, I mean, you know, the, the, the Kwon McDonald case was one where questions have been raised about, you know, a long time. And then the other one was when this youngster was shot in Cleveland who was playing with a toy gun and where there were pretty serious questions raised about how the district attorney handled that investigation. And, and, and this isn't to cast any aspersions on our state's attorney, it's just a point of principle. I mean, I, when, when, when I, you know, I'm a scientist and I engage in peer review of journal articles and of grants. And I'm disqualified from reviewing grant proposals or papers by anybody with whom I have recently collaborated. Because there's, and it isn't that, I don't take that as a, as an attack on my integrity.
Sure.
I, it's just a way to maintain the integrity of the system. And it seems to me that, that a similar issue arises, not, not because of the, the, the character of our state's attorney, but just because of inherently the police officer is almost certainly going to be one who has had in previously a collaborative relationship with the state's attorney's office. But anyway, that's, okay, anyway, that's not, so that's not.
That's not Mike Atkinson's request or, or within his purview to ask for a special prosecutor? We present to the state's attorney, they then make the decision whether or not they should remove themselves from the case.
Yeah, or if we felt that that should be a matter, of course, then it's really up to us to try to work this system and make that happen, okay.
So, chief, the question that I had was in relationship to how does the city of Urbana define serious use of force that would enact or cause you to reach out to the multi-jurisdictional team?
When Mike Atkinson read kind of the overview, that was what Anthony Cobb and Dan Walsh and the other chiefs of police, Jeff Christensen and I, all sat around a room and said, when should we decide? Now, there's also a catch-all in there that says, and any other time. I personally am going to err on the side of caution and call them probably quicker than other police agencies may only because I understand the concerns that the council has and members of the community have with respect to what direction the police department goes on certain investigations. So the decision is really up to the chief of police. You can't, and, and that general overview that Mike shared with you, and if we can find that again, I can read it to you because certainly any in custody death, when you talked about positional asphyxia cases or the potential for excited delirium, those types of situations where it causes death, certainly in all of those circumstances, we would, I would call the multi-jurisdictional team. So we, as a group of chiefs and the sheriff, decided that at a minimum, all in custody deaths, use of force involving firearm, where a citizen is injured. Oftentimes, the police are involved, they, they shoot an animal or they shoot at a person but don't strike them. It wouldn't rise to the level of the multi-jurisdictional team because I don't know if you've got a flavor of how complex it is. I mean, within two hours, most of them are here, but it's an incredibly difficult organizational and logistical structure to get all these guys together, take them away from their current caseload because they are fully committed then to conduct this investigation. You posed the question, I think, Aaron, a little earlier about is there, is there an occasion where the jurisdictional team could decline to respond? Typically, they wouldn't decline, however, there was a death investigation within the jail. And they made the determination, Mike made the determination, look, we don't need 22 detectives to come to this particular event. I'm going to handpick a group of folks, we're going to go and interview all of the potential witnesses, we're going to get all the video, and they, they reduced that number in that particular case. But typically, when they come, they come, you know, in full force. So with respect to the use of force, any other similar criminal investigative perceived or articulated as a conflict or due to the complexity is requested by the affected chief. An example of that may not be a serious use of force event. It may be something, and I'm using this purely hypothetical, that a police officer used a squad car to try to run someone over. I mean, I'm making, literally making up an example where there may not be death or great bodily harm, but it was such a serious infraction that I say, I need to remove the Urbana police from this one, I would probably call the multi-jurisdictional team in that circumstance.
And my final question was in relationship to... And my final question was in relationship to what is our current policy, verbatim, like, in writing? How much time does an officer have to tell their version of this if they are the officer involved in this situation?
Well, there is no verbatim in writing, because my response is it depends entirely on the situation. If a police officer was just involved in the most horrific, traumatic event that he or she ever faced, and they said, "I am not prepared to address this, in no way, shape or form am I going to require them to address it that evening." And if they need time to spend with their family, or they need a sleep cycle to feel comfortable with that, I would say, as a matter of routine, certainly within three days, I'm going to have a statement. Or the officer, or somebody said here, there could be a situation where the police officer says, "I am not going to discuss this situation with you." I would then have to rely on what these guys provided through physical evidence, through other witness interviews, through all the other stuff, just like any other criminal investigation. And then, once that is all done, it goes to the state's attorney. They make a determination. And I then would have to address trying to figure out what happened. You know, there's a whole nother version of this where there's the internal investigation where we can compel an officer to share information, but that information can't be used against them. It's called garrity. It's very complicated. But that comes at the conclusion of the criminal investigation.
So, an officer can be involved in an actual death of a... Shooting of a citizen?
Yeah.
And not have to say anything in relationship to, other than the Public Safety Act, they can just not say anything, and then wait for the entire criminal investigation to be over, and then you can compel them to say something about that particular act that could not be used against them in the criminal?
Yes. That's correct. Just like you could. I mean, if I suspected you of being involved in the shooting, and you say, "Look, I don't want to talk to you about that." Now, I... The difference is, I can't compel you to talk to me about it. That's the difference. We would go on the physical evidence, the eyewitness testimony of others and make a case from there.
So, just sort of directly, if an officer, an Urbana police officer, chose that route to not tell you their version of what took place in this situation, you couldn't... Is there a policy? Do you have the right to fire them for that?
Oh, no. I mean, that's... Now, we get a whole bunch of attorneys involved, and we would... You know, I mean, there's so many... Absolutely, you would have the authority to make a recommendation to the mayor to say, "We need to fire him immediately." But that's...
Okay. I was just wondering if that was the case. All right. So, that's interesting. But I'm done.
I know that last exchange took...
Okay. Well, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you.
Now, of course, I should clarify, Erin, that we would, of course, say, "You're compelled to write a police report." Now, if that person says, "I absolutely refuse," you know, I assure you, I mean, it's never happened in 32 years of doing this, but if it ever did, we would have to address it immediately. But...
Okay.
Okay. Educational. I'll look forward to another conversation.
And there's no way a video could... The mayor could hold... Have a video snug tucked away, and her and the state's attorney was keeping it from everybody else. That just couldn't happen here. Is that... Was that...
The mayor?
Well, I'm just going off the Laquan McDonald situation. A video like that shouldn't... It's just... It's going to go into evidence. There's no way it's going to just...
We don't even... Yeah. The evidence... The Illinois State Police handle all the evidence. We don't even retain it here, for the purpose of transparency and the concerns from the public perception that the police may do something like that. We wouldn't even have... We wouldn't have the physical copy of it to hide, which is a good thing.
Thank you all. I really appreciate y'all taking the time and sharing that information. Very informative.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you all. Okay. Try to change gears here. Next up is petitions and communication, and I have one card here from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood, who don't wish to speak at this time, but would like to go on the record that they're continuing to be concerned about the Dr. Ellis Sauer subdivision problem. Anyone else? Okay. Next, no unfinished business. We have reports of standing committees. Eric, we have three items.
Okay. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I submit to you Resolution Number 2016-01-003R, Resolution authorizing intervention in a pending property tax assessment appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Erin. Seeing none with the clerk please call a roll.
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schmeyer?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move ordinance number 2016-01-003, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015, 2016 annual budget to account for equipment services, staffing transition.
Second. Moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis. Discussion. Seeing none with the clerk please call a roll.
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schmeyer?
Yes.